Thank you. We have, next item is-
Councilman Johnson?
Yes, I actually hit my button a little earlier, a little late. I'm not sure which on this, but I'm gonna go ahead and spit it out now. I've got some calls and some complaints about our transits that are downtown. I actually had a law enforcement friend of mine contact me this week and tell me that he had been approached and actually threatened. And I really hope that we can, I know there's no easy solution with our transient problem, but I'm continually getting complaints about aggressive transients that are bothering people. I actually had one bother me the other day, just, you know, over and over, excuse me, one week, every day I went to the post office asking me for money. And I would hope that somehow, there's, I don't know what the solution is, but it's not good for downtown. And that which brings me to the transient home that we have set up here on City Hall. I think it's time that we look at possibly taking that down and try to relocate these folks somewhere. I don't know where, but I don't think it's any longer appropriate that we have them here at City Hall. I know that I'm getting complaints about this, and the public servant that I am, I must bring these issues forward. You know, we got a transient problem downtown. I'm getting harassed, other people are getting harassed. We've got this unsightly mess out here that's unkept, and I just think it's time that we, maybe soon, move this camp that we have here on City Hall grounds. I'd like to hear from staff or how we go about that, because, you know, this is City Hall, and this isn't a transient stop. I mean, at some point, we've got to address that problem. I know it's an uncomfortable topic, I feel uncomfortable about it, but I'm having constituents and people in this community that says, Larry, this has got to stop. So, I don't know if we can get that on agenda, maybe next committee of the whole, or what, but somehow, we need to address this. Thank you.
Thank you. Somewhere in my mind, I think I've heard some comments that staff is working in terms of trying to come up with some sort of solution regarding the situation that we have on the grounds. And I have to concur with you regarding some of the issues that have caused an adverse impact across the street over there at St. Joseph Church on a constant basis. And so, if in fact, we could get some information for discussion at the COW meeting next, appreciate it.
Mr. Townsend, council members, we certainly, I'll provide an update from you on the legality issue of Occupy. And then, I'll get with Mr. Reynolds and prepare an informational item or discussion item for committee of the whole about Mr. Johnson's issues.
Thank you so much.
Yes, I'm Cheryl Boyster, citizen of Pensacola, and I am offended. The mayor's representative has very much offended me. I am Occupy. I am a representative of Occupy. I have been active in Occupy since the very first day, every single day. If I don't look so dressed up today, it's because I have spent this entire day in the Occupy Community Garden, which raises vegetables for manna. And if you will remember the many things that Occupy has been doing, they help decorate your city for Christmas. They've helped with the work at Open Books, to get that up, and several other organizations. I know that my colleagues are constantly busy running around doing as many things as we can to help this city be a better, richer place. And I am offended, okay? Now, the purpose of Occupy is to provide an open forum for all citizens to come together and discuss political issues. There are many of us who feel that things are not terribly functional in this country anymore, in large part due to political corruption at all levels. And, you know, I have, you have seen me every meeting in this room, and you know this is the first time I have come up to speak. And I, okay, as for that corner, Occupy through to, due to the fact of losing our tents and all the different legal issues we've been going through, have been able to provide a refuge for homeless individuals in this city. And certain members of Occupy, I know, have been working really hard, because I know these people personally, and I have slept on that corner when I have chosen to do so. I was there Christmas Eve. You know, these people work very, very hard at keeping that corner safe and free of individuals who might be, well, a bit scary. You know, and I respect the work that they've done. And we have discussed with them the importance of keeping things clean and orderly, and they have been able to comply with us. It's difficult, because we are dealing with mayor, our dear mayors, homeless, because they do exist. They are real people, and they are good people. And, you know, I've spent a good part of my day today before I got to the garden, running around trying to help certain individuals find certain resources like food and shelter. So, it's, just know of what you speak, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is now our time for open forum, and I see the court coming with some cars here. Ms. Dixie Myers. Welcome, Ms. Myers.
Thank you, counsel. That being said, on your mic card, you will see I'm speaking for the homeless. Yes, I am from Occupy. We do not support the homeless, we will embrace them. Now, you all realize that the waterfront mission last night was Sunday night, which means here in the city, there is no place for them to go. Have you, you might notice that on the corner that Occupy often stands and hands down information, we have homeless there, not because we advertise it, not because it's not a place to be. A corner is not a place to live. But thanks to the city, the waterfront mission is closed. Now, there is a brand-new wonderful, from what I've heard, I've not seen it personally, in the county on Fairfield, is a great distance away. It's a hard walk. And if you don't have bus money, or a bike, or a vehicle, it's difficult to get there. What does this city intend to do for our homeless? You can't push them under the rug, you can't push them back into the woods. Now, I was here, what, four months ago, five months ago, and we had a little discussion. And President Hall, you talked how you had had six people homeless, okay, and we all shared stories. We're gonna have more than six. We're gonna have quite a few. Does this council have any plan of what we're going to do? These are people. Anybody have an answer? That's what I was afraid of. Now, Mrs. Myers, I want to thank you for all the support that you have done for the hungry and the homeless in your district and in the city. You've worked very hard. I know you've worked very hard with Father Monk, and several of the council has. But you're all looking at me like I have three heads, I don't. This is a question that you were supposed to answer a few months back. Nobody has bothered. President Hall, do you have any answer?
Just, you've still got your five minutes. If you wish to talk, I'm not responding. Ms. Myers would like to respond, and then Mr. Johnson.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for coming down here and raising the issue of the homeless. And I think your question is absolutely appropriate. I think it's a fair question, I think it's an important question, and a necessary question. And I would like to see this city address the needs of the homeless. One of the needs the homeless has is for mass transportation. And this city should take that issue up and discuss how at least we would participate in providing that resource. There are many other resources that need to be provided, not just to the homeless, but to poor people-
Low-income.
Low-income people. And so, I think your question is fair, and I feel that it's unfortunate that we don't have an answer for you. I hope that we can eventually work on that and have an answer for you.
Maybe we'll bring it up on council on the whole. Maybe we'll get a group together. Just an idea.
Okay, Ms. Myers. Okay, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Gerald's, and Dr. Wu.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, thank you, Mr. President. If y'all can come up with a solution for this, I think you could share it with the world, because I think this is a worldwide problem. And I would encourage you to, why don't you do a little research, and you email us with a solution. You can do a little research, go to other municipalities and other cities, and see how they're dealing with it successfully. And then, share that information-
Cincinnati, you know, are there public schools that are empty because they were old or whatever? They actually turn them in.
Yes, ma'am. But anyhow, if you would, find out, you know, the solution, the best solution-
I will bring that to you.
If you share that with us, we'll sure look at it. Thank you very much.
And regarding those schools, ma'am, is, I think the school board would be the appropriate place. We've tried to work with the school board on reuse of several school properties to no avail, but so-
That would be wonderful.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll look forward to that response from you, ma'am. Thank you very much. We'll look forward for your solution to this problem. Thank you.
Mr. Gerald's and Dr. Wu.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I agree with Mrs. Myers that the question deserves an answer. I don't think it's something that we can sidestep or avoid. We must face it head-on and see if we can find a solution. But to, and I agree with your comments, to attempt to continue to dismiss it, so to speak, and pretend that it's not a problem. It may not be a problem for those of us who have places to live, but it is a problem not only for the homeless, but also for the city of Pensacola. As we try to revitalize the downtown, the park is up and running, baseball games, we have visitors coming to town, and we want to, we don't want that to be a problem. And in order to avoid a problem in the long run, it is my belief that it's necessary that we address it. And the idea of putting together, we form committees for everything else, to do studies and look at it and bring back recommendations. And this issue deserves a committee to look at it. And as far as other groups, I would certainly invite them to participate with you, because what impacts the homeless in the city and where they are located impacts the rest of the city. And that's really all there is to it. But whatever the council comes up with, if it's something we need to have on the committee of the whole, I'll take that up in new business. And we need to look at whether putting a committee together to study the problem and see what solutions we can find.
Okay, we discussed that like four months ago, about getting a committee together. And nothing has been done.
Well, I would be in favor of putting it on the committee of the whole, and we need to find a solution-
I'll be there.
And move forward, rather than attempting to avoid the issue and just wait until it blossoms into a problem that we have to deal with right away. So, I look forward to our session this evening on, under new business, to make sure that this council gets involved and addresses the situation before it becomes a bigger problem. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Wu.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Councilman Johnson said, I wish we were smart enough to be able to give you an answer on what the solution should be. But I do believe that it requires individuals become involved. You asked a question, what have we done? And I can't speak for anyone else, but I can tell you, for five years, I cooked breakfast at Lowe's and Fisher's on a weekly basis. I can tell you, for 15 years, I rang the bell for Salvation Army. And I can tell you that I've worked on over 20 habitat for humanity homes. And if I was smart enough to know the solution, there would be no more homes to build and no more bells to ring, but it's above my intelligence level. But you can't make this-
If you looked around, there is a lot of foreclosed homes, there's a lot of city property owned, that we could house our homeless in.
Right.
But nobody is taking the time, the trouble, or the interest.
Well, I think, I don't know if that's completely true. Man for Humanity, for example, Man Food Bank, I know have taken empty lots, and they're growing vegetables in a lot of those lots.
Oh, we have, Occupy was given a lot with manna. We are growing vegetables so we can feed the hungry and the homeless.
Well, that, and I think that's all part of the solution, but, you know, to make the assumption that we're not doing anything, I don't know is a very correct one.
I'm only seeing what I see.
Right, but as Councilman Johnson aptly said, you know, if we knew the answer to this, we would probably be crowned the smartest people on earth.
There you go.
Councilman Hall, I don't mean to put him on the spot, I was talking about my good deeds, he has taken people in his house that have no food-
Welcome to my world.
He had no food, and he's fed them. But he's never, to my knowledge, ever sat here and said that he did that. I happen to know that he did do that.
No, he did sit here about four months ago and told us about the story. And it was wonderful.
Right.
And I commend him.
Well-
I commend everybody who wants to do something.
As Councilman Johnson says, if you have some suggestions, we're more than happy to hear them.
And I will be more than available.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Again, thank you for hearing it. Please, open your eyes.
Mr. Townsend has, wants to make a war.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think you can be assured that all of us are really sensitive to this issue. I don't think any of us up here are not sensitive to this issue, that it's something that is happening all over the United States. I don't feel that friction among us is going to eradicate the problem. There are significant agencies that are doing something. Right across the street, which I am a part of, and which you know about, is St. Joseph Church over there. We have caring and sharing, we have a medical clinic, we have a soup kitchen, and it goes on at least two or three times a week. We even put a portable toilet across the street for your use, and you know about it because-
Okay, that is my use, I have a home and bathroom. Thank you.
Understand that, but I'm telling you that the city, which we are part of the city, and all of us here are sensitive to this, maybe, Mr. President, this could be an excellent item to go on our strategy committee meeting for further discussion. But I think to take care of this problem, friction is not going to help us. We need to get together, sit down, and try to come up with a plan of action to deal with it, because we have folks feeding down here at this park down here, we're feeding over here twice a week, we got this medical clinic, and you'd be amazed how many folks that come over here.
I do know. I have watched the numbers.
Okay, you've seen them over there, and you probably have seen me over there, I don't know whether you have or not.
Yes, I have.
But the point is, we are sensitive to this, and it's something that we have to deal with.
Yeah, I'm not trying to cause friction, but I am just trying to bring your memory back up, I believe it was three or four months ago, when we shared our stories about the homeless. And at one point in time, they were, we were gonna get together a panel, discuss it. It did not happen. I'm just asking this time, can we make something happen? I've got, you know, if you look out, we've got people wandering around here because the waterfront mission is closed.
Hold it, hold it. Thank you, Ms. Myers. Okay, thank you. And the last one is the homeless issue. Anybody want to make a motion on that? Ms. Myers?
I don't know what we, as a city, can and should be doing to address the issue of homelessness. I don't see that we can do anything very effective without a joint effort with the county. I think that this is an issue that we would have to work with the county on, simply because a lot of the resources that people who are homeless use, some are in the county, some are in the city. However, I don't believe that it's an issue that we should ignore. I don't know how to go about approaching this issue. I don't know that having an agenda item to discuss this issue, it may be helpful. Councilman Gerald's suggested establishing some sort of an advisory committee to look into the issue. So, I would like to hear from other council members, I'm not going to make the motion at this time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Townsend?
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree that this is not just a city issue, it's a Pensacola, Escambia County issue, and I would hope that we could get a group together comprising of city and county, as an advisory committee or search committee, in terms of trying to get some additional information and come up with some recommendations. I think that would be the way to go. So, I'll, if we are scheduled to have a city-county commissioners' meeting, I would hope that we could have, I would say administrator and the mayor and the county administrator, they could get together, and then we could discuss it as an agenda item during the city-county commissioners' meeting. And then, also, as a, if we could get some statistical information in terms of what agency that we do have available here that are currently existing for our strategy meeting, we might can have an hour discussion on that. Somewhere, I remember this recently, a considerable amount of money came into this county to deal with the homeless and have, try to secure homes for them on a temporary basis. I don't know what happened in that regard. They were even looking at some of the properties out by the airport, and homes out that way. So, I think there's been some effort, and there might be some monies already that have come down. Probably, we need to just do a research and see what we got existing, and go from there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Dr. Wu? Mr. Gerald's?
Thank you, Mr. Gerald, Mr. Gerald's held, that's me. We're going around and around. First of all, I have a couple of comments, and then I will make a motion to go ahead and put it on the agenda for discussion. You know, a few minutes ago, we approved a measure to send a proclamation to vendors, so to speak, at stores to restrict the sale of candy, I mean, cigarette-flavored candies. And it's as simple as that. If we know, and thank Ms. Myers for so aptly pointing out, and we understand that it is a city-county issue, I see nothing wrong with having it on the agis, the agenda, and inviting those representatives from the county to come to our meeting to discuss the issue, so that if they have any objections or any information that, about things that are going on in the county, we can talk about it jointly in the meeting, along with the individuals who are pushing the idea. So, it's not something that we cannot do, however, it is something that we must do, because if we leave the problem, if we ignore it, we will allow it to fester. So, I move that we put it on the committee of the whole agenda, invite the county representatives with their input, and versus avoiding it, we can all sit down and talk about it jointly. And that's my motion.
I second the motion.
We've got a motion in a second. Could I just offer a suggestion, is that you keep the motion the same, but that we place it on the agenda for the next city-county meeting?
Do we have a date? Has that been scheduled?
That has not been scheduled, but-
Can we put a timetable on it, within the next 30 days, 60 days, or?
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure-
I understand, we need time to notify them of our intention.
Yeah.
But next 30 days, next 30 days, 60 days?
You've got a proper motion on, is there any discussion on this? Is to have the issue of homelessness and city council's role in that, and what the county's role is, invite county representatives to come participate in that discussion at the next committee of the whole meeting. Yes, sir?
There's been an organization, I believe it was United Way, that spent quite a considerable time looking at it, is, I believe it was called Pathway to Change, and I believe you've been involved with that group as well. And it seems like to ignore what they've come up with and all the work they've done would be a shame. I believe this is something important that we need to look at. I don't know if we can have all the information we need by month, you know, our next meeting, that would be my only concern. But I believe that beside the county, I would like to also suggest that the people who've been working for years in this Pathway to Change be invited as well.
Yeah, I spent a year and a half on the Poverty Solutions Team, that, sponsored by United Way, was administered by Catholic charities, and may have been even as much as two years, very rewarding experience there. I'm not against discussing it in some limited fashion, but because I have done so much work with the homeless, and there are so many organizations out there that really are quite professional at this, and one of the things that Bruni Emanuel taught me, and I'm sure most of you guys know him, is no matter how well-intentioned government is, or even some other benevolent group, let's just say a church, for example, intend to be, is that oftentimes, they do a little more harm than they do good by luring people away from the trained professionals that have all the res, well, most of the resources that they need. And that quite oftentimes, put people in more jeopardy than they would have been. I don't think we have anybody here at the city that is qualified in that area. So, I wish to have a magic wand where I could, you know, do it. And I still continue to try to help the homeless. Sent a guy over to Jacksonville that called me four days later, somehow or another, he ended up in Tampa, needing a bus ticket back to Pensacola, so I got housing for about five days before we got him sent off to Houston, and I got a phone call from him in Tulsa. So, I'm not sure what's going on there, but my efforts with those guys continue, and even dealing with it on a one-on-one basis, I don't always have the answers, clearly. Okay, so we've got a, Mr. Sansing wants to talk about homelessness.
There's a motion on the floor to move the previous question, that requires a second.
Gary Sansing, 1517 East Jackson, citizen of the city and county. I don't know if I can be said, I can say that I've been homeless, but I've been out on the road thumbing in middle of nowhere, or what I'm trying to say, at one time, I have been out. And luckily, in towns where there was no motels anywhere, or everything's closed. It is a valid issue even for someone like me, and I thank all of you for speaking to this. I mean, we're morally responsible for one another. Somehow or another, the city and the county got to get together and discuss things like this. I mean, when I travel, in Europe, they don't have motels, they have hotels, but they have youth hostels. And I like to talk about looking at Hotel de la Paris, where 500 people are sleeping along the Seine. along the Seine. It was wonderful to see that. Even, I mean, the youth hostels are filled up and where do people stay? Luckily, I found places, but everybody can't. So, what I'm saying, just that Ms. Myers is right, or council lady, bring it up and just discuss it. I mean, wherever you can have, maybe there aren't experts around, but maybe a minister or some caring soul that will speak to it, that's all. Discuss it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Hire.
Rebecca Hire, twenty-one oh one scenic highway. I was a little bit frustrated listening to the speaker earlier who brought up the issue of homelessness. We've been talking about homelessness in the city for months now. And of course, the problem goes way back before that, but of course, the Occupy movement brought this kind of to the forefront. And why I was so frustrated is I've heard a lot of people over the last few months come to this microphone and bring up this issue, but no one's proposed any solutions. Nobody's come forth and said, "If we did this, it would help the problem." Not solve the problem, but help the problem. So, what we need is people to come forth with concrete proposals, not just, "We need to do something about this." Or, "Council, would you please solve this problem for us?" Because we all know that you can't, you don't have a magic wand. You can't do that. But what we can do is we can form a task force. There are a lot of resources working on homelessness problems. And everybody knows a little bit of the piece, little piece of the puzzle. And I've talked to a lot of people and know a lot of people who are working on it. But if we could put together a group, if we can have a task force on community redevelopment, I don't see why we can't have a Pensacola task force to come up with a proposal, not just a problem identification, but actual concrete proposals of ways to address these needs. So, I'd like to see the council take some action on calling for a task force to actually research the problem, bring in or get involved with all the experts that we have, we have a lot of expertise around here, and actually come forth with some coordinated proposals, perhaps just more communication and working together with all the different groups that are confronting different aspects of the whole problem, feeding people, housing people, medical care, all the different aspects. But I think that's a job for a group, a task force. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mueller.
The reason I'm concerned about this is because the face of homelessness is changing. It's no longer the down-and-out or the person who chooses to, you know, step out of society. It's the little old lady who can't, you know, can't afford her house anymore, can't hardly afford to feed herself, who's living at her car if she's lucky. You know, it's people's mothers and fathers and young children. And, you know, what some people might, you know, think of as, you know, when they think homelessness or, you know, the homeless beggar coming up to you on the street and stuff, isn't really what the face of homelessness is anymore. So, if you'll put it on the agenda, I will go out and get as many of the public players as I can to the meeting of the whole. I will personally take my time and go out and do that. I think I have concrete suggestions and we've been working on them behind the scenes. And I believe that this is an excellent time to move forward. And I think with your help, we can make change here in Pensacola. Thank you.
Have you, Mr. Mueller, excuse me, have you talked with the people at Coalition for the Homeless?
No, I'm, we're more on a, not only the face has changed, but because of that, the way to deal with it, I believe it's also changed.
I think you might be surprised at just how in tune the Coalition of the Homeless is on what the face of homelessness is in America generally and specifically in Northwest Florida and even more, Escamia County and Pensacola. So, I'd urge you, before we reinvent the wheel, is go find out what effort the Coalition for the Homeless is doing now. It's just as a starting place.
And I'd be happy to take any other suggestions. If somebody would like to email me with a list of people to contact or, you know, in case I don't have everybody that I need to do, I would love that. It would be great. But if you'll put it on the agenda, I will get as many of those people to that meeting as I can get. Thank you.
Mr. Townsend, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's an excellent idea in terms of trying to get an advisory group together. I think if we put it on the agenda, it would be just like we're going now. We would be constantly going back and forth without any statistical evidence, without any knowledge of what other cities are facing this problem. And sure enough, other cities are facing this problem just like we are. We need to have a committee formed, do as the ladies suggested, and then come back and report and then go from there. The committee maybe could be chaired by a council member. And then they meet separately and try to secure some citizens to work with us and go at this problem in this manner. But I think if we continue to talk as a group, we will not get anything accomplished because we just don't have the expertise in terms of having the knowledge of what's out there. We can be talking, but we need to find out what's out there, what they're doing, bring them in and invite them to participate and then go from there.
Ms. Hires.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, Councilman Gerald's original suggestion was to do exactly what Ms. Hires suggested, and that is to set up an advisory committee or task force, as she said. The council has the authority to set up advisory committees. The mayor has set up numerous advisory committees with very effective results. And I think that that's the reason we need to have a discussion on the agenda. And I think that should be the focus of the discussion, is how to go about doing this. So, I would like to see it as an agenda item to focus on how we can set up a task force or an advisory committee. There is, I would like to tell you that there is a, if you want to know more about what agencies are helping the homeless, there are many groups and agencies. And they're listed in a book called The Street Survival Guide that's published by the Coalition for the Homeless. I don't know if council members are familiar with it. It's a great resource that comes out every year. I'll make sure that council has a copy of it at our next committee of the whole, just for your information. But there are many resources here in the community and the Coalition for the Homeless gets that information out to the homeless through The Street Survival Guide. If you don't have a copy of it, I'll make sure you get a copy.
Okay, thank you. I have several copies of that myself that I frequently had the opportunity to hand out. But I just want you to think about something here for a moment. Coalition for the Homeless, that is, let's interject in our task force for the homeless. It already exists. It's not just one group, it's a blanket group of different organizations out there dealing with this problem. And I'm just not confident that something that's going to have the city council stamp of approval is going to improve upon that any. Mr. Gerald.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hopefully, I can simplify the matter. I believe the hesitation and the fear may be connected to the fact that we might be considering having it on the next committee of the whole. What I think we ought to do is to move it back, thereby giving us an opportunity to get those agencies. I'm hearing things about, well, this group is doing that. If they come before us and let us know what, then we as a council will learn what they're doing. They will advise us and share that information with the people who are seeking it. But if it's a caution on the heels of trying to do it at the next cow meeting, that may be premature. I would be willing to modify my amendment to move it back at least thirty days to give the opportunity to those players that are providing services, give them an opportunity to come before us, let us know, educate us as a council. Because what I'm hearing is, we don't know. Well, we don't know what we can do. Let's hear in a certain way, in terms of what services are being provided, they can then provide the availability of those services to the people who are in need. But we're going around and around about whether we need to talk about it. Yes, we do. And if it's in a matter of the next committee of the whole, that may be premature. Let's move it back thirty days, give all the players an opportunity to prepare their information and materials that they would like to circulate. And then perhaps we can move it from that point by giving people information that's available, making sure that we as a council know and understand what our limitations are. And if you're willing to do that, I think that may be the best approach, rather than sitting here until midnight trying to decide whether or not we want to talk about it when we know we need to. So, bring in the players and let's get it on the road. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Gerald, I think it was last council meeting, you made the argument in favor of going back to the committee system. Let me ask you, if you'd be willing to do this, you and Ms. Myers as chair and co-chair, is that we develop an ad hoc committee to explore what the city of Pensacola as a governing body can do about homelessness and just take one of the meeting rooms here at City Hall, work with Mr. Mueller, work with Occupy Pensacola and all the relevant players, and the two of you be chair and co-chair of that committee. And once you've made your findings, is then you make a report to the city council.
Second.
That would be a fine idea, except that the council as a whole would still be uninformed if they don't participate. In other words, when the question came up, "Do you want to put this on the agenda for a discussion item requiring a motion?" And the second, we sat silently until we thought about it. And had it not been brought to the floor to have the motion, then we wouldn't be talking about it at all. I'm interested in making sure that when council members are approached by their constituents on the street or in the mall or wherever, that they have the necessary background information so that they can answer those questions. And then we appear to be a council that's informed as to what the problem is and how to go about solving it. But in terms of, you know, I would not want to have an ad hoc committee set up where just Mrs. Myers and myself are there and then the rest of council is still in the dark. They have a responsibility to want to be there to get informed so that we can make an intelligent decision collectively. But it's important that we all hear the same thing. We can gather information, but in the absence of other council members, it'll still be the same thing.
Okay. Dr. Wu.
Sometimes you make statements that may not be politically popular. But I would ask this body to consider, what is the function of local government? Function of local government is fire and police protection, garbage collection, janitorial service, in terms of sanitation service, I mean, streets and roads. Now, I like what Mrs. Hires said and I agree with what Mr. Mueller said. I mean, I had a gentleman meet with me the other day that said that he's not had a job for a year and a half. And I really, really feel deep compassion for the situation this gentleman's in. But what is the function of city government? What do we tax people to do? And what do they allow us to do to tax money we collect? We're talking about putting together a group. And a minute ago, we said there was no money for a library. So, if this group meets and comes up with a recommendation that we give them $500,000, we've had them spend all this time and energy and we have no funds to give them. If you have no funds to give this group, then why have them come to you for recommendations? Now, dialogue, there's nothing to prevent people from having dialogue with every one of these groups that we've mentioned. But the only reason that I feel comfortable in mentioning what is the function of a government is that I gave a litany of what I've been involved with at the very beginning. And for those that are watching and think I'm a cruel, uncompassionate person, I'll reiterate real quick, I cooked at Loaves and Fishes on a weekly basis for five years. I've worked on Twenty Habitat for Humanity Homes. And I rang the bell for Salvation Army for fifteen years. But I don't know if the citizens of Pensacola are going to be comfortable with us collecting abnormal tax and then using that money for functions outside the boundaries of what we're set up to do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Sir.
Just one more time. I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Okay, thank you. All right, clear the lights, please. Okay. We're ready to move into open forum. Thank you. Mr. Sansing. Dr. Wu, is, okay, you're good. Mr. Sansing.
Gary Sansing, fifteen seventeen East Jackson, city of Pensacola, a citizen. You know, this is a very caring city and county. I love it. And no matter what, people try and help one another. For a poor county, it is generous to the utmost with time and energy and sweat. When I look at the world, well, listen to it, like I listened to a four-hour special on Frontline the last couple of weeks, dealing with the crisis we're in, a crisis, the world's in a crisis. And it's what I've been alluding to over ten years, mainly behind the scene to economists and so forth, from Dr. Harper. And now, they have to sell the beach to match a budget. Unbelievable, when they got an economist who been, well, in his soft-spoken ways, what's happening? We've got millions of homes in the country underwater. I mean, when we talk about it, on Frontline, they said $7.7 trillion. And when you add that up to the DocCom bubble, you know, the Americans have been ripped off in the world by the greedy souls. But no matter what, we got to watch out for one another. We are responsible. So, I left, I mean, the guilty have got to be punished. And when I mean punished, not sent up to prison, but admonished and said, "Hell, you did wrong. Let's correct that. Maybe you ought to take their billions of dollars away from them or whatever, something." But listen, we are heading in the right direction. It's like I don't thank you enough, you city- It's like I don't thank you enough, you city council people. For start, allowing, I would say, most of them down on our corner are homeless, but they are representing an issue. It's Occupy Wall Street. Now, what that all is about is trying to tell you what some of us have been saying for fifteen years, the greediest running the world, from Wall Street, Madison Avenue, K Street, that's a lobby group up in Washington, and you can even put us here, because we are not giving the citizens a fair warning of what's coming. So as I keep saying, tighten our belts, help, help, help one another, and we'll get through this mess, but it's going to take us ten years at the minimum, five years halfway to recover. Bring the troops home, and when you do, you're going to have a lot of homeless vets, because a big proportion of the homeless are vets. And I think someone mentioned while I was trying to get ready to come down here about our police, but think, most of the vets cannot go home at night. Don't ever forget that. They're stuck miles away in some god-besaken land where they shouldn't be for start with. I'm referring to Iraq, and thank you for allowing us to protest on that. Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.